And so to start this off, our speaker is our own Reverend Edward Edwards for tonight. And I'm just gonna hand over right to him, Magriff.
All right, Brian, and thank you very much.
Yes. You're kind of upside down.
Very, very upside down. I don't know why or how, but I can't fix the problem in one fell swoop. So I, I hope, does that fix the problem?
Uh, well, we would not, we're not seeing.
All right, we're going to try and see if we can correct it later on, but no, rather than waste time trying to fix it.
All right, all right, I don't want to.
Somebody's asking me the question, where am I upside down? I don't know. Probably the, the, the camera that is upside down. Let's pray. Father, we want to thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you, Lord, for this opportunity that we have. Look into your word. Pray, Lord God, that you will indeed build us up by virtue of what we will hear tonight from your Holy Spirit. It is him we look to, not, not even me, not, not anybody else. We want to hear from him who guides us into all truth. So, Lord, speak to us, we pray. Glorify your son, Jesus. Advance us to be wiser and better equipped to serve you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, so like brother Brian said, when you talk about prophecy or something 101, it is a fundamental, basic introductory course to, to the topic. And prophecy is one of those subjects, topics that is attracting and always has attracted great attention, even within secular spheres. How many people have heard about Nostradamus? Anybody remember hearing the name? A, a, a French man. Hello?
Yes, the name is familiar.
All right. So, and, and you have, you have many different, uh, what do you call them? People who, who lead feences and mystic people who, who read you up and uh, with them advertise in our television and newspaper classified ads on, on Sunday afternoons and on weekends with, with an alarming kind of frequency. Well, what is prophecy? Prophecy is in very simple language declaring something that needs to be said, to be understood, or telling of something that is going to happen before it happens. So in, in, in the case of telling before it happens, prophecy is foretelling. A lot of people who can't bother with God and can't bother with the answers that God will give go to fortune tellers. We find that not so much now only in eastern religions, but the way we are incorporating any and everything in the once Christ Christian dominated world. We're importing the fortune tellers and, and, and the, the readers in, into center stage in, in our culture. To prophesy, or sorry, I should have said that to tell before it happens is what we're talking about when we talk about foretelling, F O R E. And to tell forth, to say what God or what is going to encourage, what is going to explain, what is going to build up, that is forth telling. F O R T H. So what is prophecy? In simple language, to prophesy is simply to speak prophecy. And again, remember prophecy is either foretelling something or forth telling, proclaiming something. Prophecy is the known and prophesy is the verb. My English teachers will correct me. Why do we need prophecy? Anybody wants to put forward an answer? Why do we need prophecy? Why do people get so drawn to prophecy? Knowing what is ahead, what is going to happen? That was a question for somebody brave enough to answer. Where, where do we, where do we need prophecy? Why are people so drawn to, to prophecy? To, to, to them harsh quote and to getting somebody to give them a word? No? Well, let me back up. Am I being heard?
Yes, sir, you're being heard.
I'm being heard, okay. Well, at, at least I know Brian hearing me. Why do we need prophecy?
Um, let me take a try at it. Good night.
Good night, Sharon.
They say to be, they say to be forewarned is to be forearmed.
Okay.
So it's a matter of being alert, a matter of, um, you know, having that awareness so that we are not caught off guard. We can align our lives. Um, we can be prepared, that kind of thing.
Okay. Spot on. Thank you very much. Anybody else wants to add to that?
I think it's also a part of what gives us insight into what God is seeing or doing or wants to do in, with his people, um, in people's lives. So I, I, yeah, I think that is also definitely a part of it.
All right, insight and direction from God. Now, where, where, where did prophecy originate? I want to suggest to us that prophecy i- i- is, is a construct. It's something designed, ordained, provided by God. Because he, he, he is creator, eh? From as early as Abraham encountering Abimelech. We, we, we hear Abimelech being instructed that Abraham is a, is a goodly man, a servant of God. And he will, he will pray for you. But in, in, in the, we, we see it again in, in Exodus where the, the Moses in chapter four and in chapter seven, they are, Moses and Aaron are given specific responsibilities. But Moses is reluctant because he has a speech impediment. And God says to him, I am going to send you Aaron, your brother. And you will speak to Aaron and Aaron will speak to Pharaoh. He goes further. He says, I'm going to make you like God to Aaron. In other words, you are going to be my mouthpiece, speaking what I want Pharaoh to hear, what you're going to say to Aaron and Aaron will relate. So that is really what a true prophet is. A true prophet is the representative of God. When Israel was to become a nation entering into the promised land, we see where Moses introduces the, 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 the institution, the service of prophecy. But he, he, he quotes it in, in, or he puts it in a a way that is almost well structured. This is, this is how the prophetic is going to work for you in this land. And prophecy, we're, we're, we're learning now is a means ordained by God for guiding his people. That is not to say that God will not guide secular leaders in his way. That does not mean he will not cause a prophetic word to be brought to them. As a foretelling something or forth telling something. Because the whole earth is God's. And whereas we have the, this inclination to say they, they, they are wicked, they are fleshly, they are sinners. God won't talk to them. We know that that is not true. Because God is God over the whole earth and he is not going to leave himself without a witness. Now, the, the, the secular, unsealed carnal man might not be so inclined to heed the voice of God, the word of God, or, or a prophetic message. But God in his mercy and God in his justice will cause them to hear it anyway. So a couple, couple references here as to the establishment of, of prophecy, both in national life and its importance in the church. Both in terms of where it come from, hmm, and, and, and what God has in mind for it. So the very first declaration, introduction of prophecy to the nation of Israel comes from Deuteronomy, chapter 13, verse one. And if you are here with your Bible open, do please read it for us. Deuteronomy, chapter 13, verse one, verse one to verse three. Yeah, Deuteronomy one, Deuteronomy 13, one to three. Somebody else find Imus chapter three from verse seven to verse eight. And Romans chapter 12, verse six and verse, verse six to verse eight. Okay. Romans 12 from verse six to verse eight. And Imus chapter three, verse seven and verse eight. Deuteronomy, chapter 13, verse one.
So Romans 12, verse six to verse eight?
Yes. And we're taking them in this order. Deuteronomy 13, verse one. Imus chapter three, verse seven and verse eight. Anybody seeing my screen? Hello?
No, no.
No.
Do you miss the screen?
Yeah.
I'm not sharing a screen, yeah?
I'm not sharing a screen.
No.
Oh dear. Okay. Let's go again. How is that? Any better?
Uh, I think it's coming up.
Coming up.
Coming up. All right. Still coming up?
It's there.
It's there, it's there.
All right, good. All right. Deuteronomy 13, verse one. Would somebody like to read it?
Arises among you a prophet or a dreamer of dreams. And he gives you a sign or a wonder. That's verse one. Do I go to verse three?
No, no, don't, don't go. Not yet.
That's verse one.
Yeah, he said, if a prophet arises among you or a dreamer of dreams and gives you a sign or a wonder. It, it sounds almost open-ended and unplanned. If him just arise, who, who, who appoints him to be a prophet? Who, who, who appoints him to be a, a dreamer of dreams who is authorized to share his dreams with the nation? Or who authorizes him to, to perform a sign or a wonder?
God.
You, you say God? Uh? All right. We're going to be very, very, very precise. There, there, there are conditions to be met before we accept such a person who arises as being credible, somebody who we can believe. And later on, we're going to come to the basis upon which we accept and give credence. Give, give attention to what this person is saying or doing. Again, Imus chapter three, verse seven and verse eight underscores the relevance, the importance, the weight that God puts on the, the, the prophetic. Remember now that prophecy as established, as ordained by God is intended to be the means or one of the means by which he guides, he intervenes in human affairs. So let's read Imus chapter three, verse seven and verse eight. Volunteers.
Surely the Lord God will, will do nothing, but he revealeth his secret unto his servants, the prophets. The lioneth roared, who will not fear. The Lord God had spoken, who can but prophesy?
Okay, so a couple of things are clear from these two verses. God is not going to do anything without revealing his secret plan to his servants, the prophets. Couple of reasons for that. Firstly, he is a righteous judge. So he will not hold us accountable for what we do not know. Secondly, it is so important that we know that he is prepared, the prophet says, not to do anything until he has revealed it to his servants, the prophet. So we are seeing here that there are people who God will entrust, God trust, to be the bearers, proclaimers, foretellers and forth tellers of his truth. Second thing we're noticing in verse eight is this. God speaks to the prophets. And, and we know the argument about the Old Testament and New Testament and, and cessationist and people who are continuationist. But we know that God speaks to the prophets. When he speaks to his people, they might be nervous and fearful about saying what he says. But we know when the word comes, like Jeremiah, we cannot help but speak it. It is like fire shut up in our bones. And if, if, if we don't do it now, we might go down to a fish belly and come back, but the word will be spoken. And then Romans chapter 12, verse six to verse eight.
And it says, having then gifts differing according to the grace that is given to us, whether prophecy, let us prophesy according to the proportion of faith or ministry, let us wait on our ministering, or he that teaches on teaching, or he that exhorteth on exhortation. He that gibbet, let him do it with simplicity. He that ruleth with diligence, he that showeth mercy with cheerfulness.
Okay, so it is, it is God who gives the gift by his Holy Spirit. Hmm? We, we, we said that when God speaks to an individual, a message to be proclaimed, that person cannot but prophesy. He is constrained, she is constrained to do what God says, to relay what God says. Now, we're being told that it is the spirit of God who gives gifts to men. But one thing I notice in this is the, 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 well, two things. One, the proportion of faith. Hmm? To the extent that we are prepared to obey, because if, if, if there, there is no faith, where there is no obedience. We obey because we believe. And then it is necessary for us to act in proportion to the faith. We can only go and abide. We can only operate within the limits of what God says. We can only do what God says to do. And to act outside of that grace and to act outside of what God has commanded is risky business. And we're going to come to the credibility of, of prophecy in a little while. But it is important for us to understand that we can add and we can take away, we can pretty up. We can only say what God commands us to say. Some of the purposes of prophecy. Two here, preparation and guidance. Our sister Sharon spoke to that earlier on. And assurance through trial. Let's read Acts chapter 21 from verse 10 to verse 14. And in the meantime, somebody else find John 15, verse 26 to chapter 16, verse four. So Acts 21, 10 to 14. All right. As we were staying there for some time, a prophet named Agabas came down from Judea and coming to see us, he took Paul's white band, belt or sash, and bound his own feet and hands and said, this is what the Holy Spirit says. In this same way, the Jews in Jerusalem will bind the man who owns this band and they will hand him over to the Gentiles. Now, when we heard this, both we and the local residents began pleading with Paul, trying to persuade him not to go up to Jerusalem. Then Paul replied, what are you doing, weeping and breaking my heart like this? For I am ready not only to be bound and imprisoned, but even to die at Jerusalem for the name of the Lord Jesus. And since he would not be dissuaded, we stopped pleading and fell silent, saying, the Lord's will be done. Now, we, we could say that Paul is being stubborn because the prophetic word has come, that this is what is going to happen to you or to the man who owns this belt if he goes up to Jerusalem. How many of us would not bother to go to Jerusalem?
Not I.
Uh?
Who don't bother?
But it's all, Paul is convinced that this is within God's purpose for his life, that he goes to Jerusalem to, to preach the word of God, which he has been given to preach. So the, 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 the preparation here is, is, is fortification. The preparation here is The preparation here is you know your purpose in life. This is confirming what lies ahead for you. This is building up your resolve. And I'm, I'm, I'm reminded as I went over this. Oh, Jesus in passing through Samaria. What was. Confronted with the same thought. That the people who were with him did not want him to go up to Jerusalem because. They knew he was, they knew what faced him. And in the community where they were, I think, yeah, Samaria. People wanted to give him a bad face. Because they knew he had, he wasn't fixed on staying with them. And the, the disciples wanted to call down fire. On, 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 on the village people. Jesus said, you don't know. Of what party you belong, you don't know the heart of your Lord. So, so the prophetic is not always. To, to keep us safe and sound and pretty and rich and fancy. Sometimes it is, it is, it is preparation, it is fortification. To go through what we know we are going to face. In the service of our Lord. Here now in John chapter fifteen, twenty-six, so chapter sixteen, verse four. More of this same principle. Coming to light. John fifteen, twenty-six to chapter sixteen, verse four. Does somebody like to read it?
It says, but when the comforter is come, whom I will send unto you from the Father. Even the spirit of truth which proceeded from the Father, he shall testify of me. And he also shall be a witness. Um, I'm using my phone and I'm not seeing that word, bear witness. But he have been with me from the beginning. Um, these things have I spoken unto you that you should not be offended. They shall put you out of the synagogues, yea, the time cometh. That whatsoever killeth you. Will think that whosoever killeth you will think that he doeth God's service. And these things will they do unto you because they have not known the Father nor me. But these things I told you that when the time shall come. He may remember that I told you of them. And these things I said, not unto you at the beginning, because I was with you.
Okay, so, so Jesus now is getting in, the tired beginning to hit the road. In terms of his relationship with the disciples. And he specifically says to them here that I, I am telling you these things, I am, I am, I am prophesying to you. I am forewarning you that people are going to kick you out of the synagogue. People are going to kill you in the name of God. And I'm telling you these things from now, so that when the time comes. You may remember that I told you of them. Yes, leading up till now, leading up onto my departure, I was with you. You, you were under the. The shadow of my wings, the protection of my wings, but when I leave you, you are going to face the music. And I'm preparing you beforehand so that when the music start playing. You would be fortified again, you would have been prepared. So. It is the purpose of prophecy, to prepare and to assure. Prophecy also reveals the mind of God. First Peter chapter two. Verse twenty-one. And in the meantime. Oh, where did this come from? That Ephesians, that is Ephesians chapter four, eh, it's not Ephesians money. Ephesians chapter four. So somebody please read First Peter chapter two, verse twenty-one, and then. Acts chapter fifteen, verse thirty to thirty-two. Verse thirty. Sorry, go ahead.
For he yearn to, he were called, because Christ also suffered for us. Leaving us an example that we should follow his steps.
No ma'am, is, is First Peter two that? First Peter two, verse twenty-one. Alright, I tell you what we're looking for, we're looking for. The text which says, for prophecy never had its origin in the human will. But prophets, though human. Foke from God as they were carried along by the Holy Spirit. Alright, so, so, so. Again. Prophecy. Is not. The, the creative ability. Or the, the insight of learned human beings. True prophecy originates. With God. And is delivered through human beings. Led, carried along. By the Spirit of God. Prophecy then reveals the mind of God, which is. Pretty much consistent with what we have already looked at in Amos chapter three, verse seven and verse eight. Let's go over now to prophecy builds up the people of God. Acts chapter fifteen, verse thirty, two to thirty-two. First Corinthians fourteen, verse three. And Ephesians chapter four, verse eleven to verse thirteen. Volunteers.
For when we were dismissed, they came to Antioch, and when they were gathered. The multitude together, they delivered the epistle. Which when they had read, they rejoiced for the consolation. And Judas and Silas, being a prophet also themselves, exhort the brethren with many words. And confirmed them.
Hmm hmm. Alright, so, so we, we see prophets here, Judas and Silas. Recognized as prophets. Who encouraged and strengthened the believers. Through what they spoke to them, on top of what the letter. Read to the congregation. Meant, so there is an element, a strong element of encouragement and. Comfort. To the prophetic. And in that respect. It is foretelling. God's mind. To a people. Who in that particular point in time would need that kind of encouragement. First Corinthians fourteen, verse three. First Corinthians fourteen, verse three.
First Corinthians fourteen, verse three. And it says. But on the other hand, the one who prophesies. Speaks to people for edification, to promote their spiritual growth. And speaks words of encouragement to uphold and advise them concerning the matters of God. And speaks words of consolation to compassionately comfort them.
Amen, thank you Doreen.
You're welcome.
So, so a- again. It. Prophecy must build up. Does that mean that it's the only thing prophecy does? No. In building up, sometimes we are reproved. We are, we are corrected. If you remember David and his encounter with, with, with the prophet. Prophet told him a story. And it was not a nice story. David in his sense of indignation. Wanted to know who the offender was in this story. Prophet Nathan told him, you are the man. So there, there is a confrontation. But we are also being told that the prophetic. There is a purpose. Of building up people in their walk with God. We see more of that in Ephesians chapter four, verse eleven to thirteen. Somebody went to read that one for us?
And he himself gave some to be prophets, some, some to be apostles, some prophets. Some evangelists and some pastors and teachers. By the equipping of the saints for the work of ministry, for the edifying of the body of Christ. Till we all come to the unity of the faith and of the knowledge of the Son of God. To a perfect man, to the measure of the stature of the fullness of Christ.
Okay, so God has a purpose for his church. For me and you as members of that church. And as long as the church does not attain the, the. Unity of the faith and of the knowledge of the Son of God to mature manhood. These offices, these gifts, these equipping of the saints for the work of the ministry. That, that is what apostleship and prophets and evangelists and shepherds and teachers are appointed for. So the, 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 the prophetic is about building up God's church. Until it comes to maturity. Anytime anybody tell you that there is no need for these spiritual gifts anymore. Ask them if they think the church reached its perfect state yet. Hmm? God's intention, God's design is for us to attain the measure of the stature of the fullness of Christ. Came across an interesting story. From a gentleman, well, it's an article written by the gentleman and his second wife. They are engaged in prophetic ministry as members of the New Zealand Prophetic Network. The name is David, or the names are David and Greta Peters. Here is his. Experience when making explanation. To what Paul writes when he says in First Corinthians chapter thirteen, that we, we, we knew in part. Here, here, here is, here is something out of his own experience. He says, foretelling is not easy in prophecy. Occasionally, predictions do not come to pass. For example. Multiple sclerosis confined my first wife Jane to a wheelchair for twenty-one years. Many, myself included, received prophecies and visions. That foresaw my wife and I ministering together across a number of nations. The conclusion was that God would heal Jane and we believed for that. Instead, the Lord promoted her to heaven. Disappeared to make prophetic predictions incorrect. In hindsight. People were seeing the future accurately. But we had no frame of reference, that my wife could be anyone else but Jane. Now my second wife, Greta, and I ministered together in a number of nations. And she enjoyed wonderful health. We truly foresaw something in the spiritual realm. But interpreted it incorrectly. Got that? Were those prophecies wrong? The one about first wife Jane?
Well, I find it interesting that, well, it, it. I think, as regards to what he was saying is like. It, it said his wife.
Yeah.
But everybody would have thought it was the first wife.
Yeah.
Um, so it was still in line with what was said, just not. Um, accurate for what everybody else, even including himself would have believed.
Well. Quite so, but who, who, I, I, I have no idea of knowing what the prophecy said. It just said, he and his wife. Were going to be traveling. And then geared in prophetic ministry. Which, 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 which again raises the, the, the caution. That you and I can't go beyond what God tells us. In, 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 in specifics. What he says to you, don't add to it and don't take away from it. Leave the outworkings to him. Because of those. Limitations, if we may call them that. Because of that reality. Of knowing in part and prophesying in part. The prophet and those to whom prophecy is being delivered. Need to be careful. And, and there, there are three, three cautions. And, and there, there are three, three cautions that I would suggest. Three cautions that, that scripture themselves speak to that we, we need to observe, to bear in mind. Firstly. God's word is going to come to pass. He cannot lie. So let's go back to Deuteronomy chapter thirteen, verse one to verse three. Remember now, this, this is Moses introducing the idea out of the prophetic role in the life of the nation when they have no, no Holy Spirit being poured out to them. He is giving them ground rules bases upon which we accept or reject a prophetic word. So First Corinthians, no, First Corinthians, Deuteronomy chapter thirteen, verse one to verse three. If somebody would like to read that, please. If a prophet arises among you or a dreamer of dreams and gives you a sign or a wonder, and the sign or the wonder which he spoke to you comes to pass. And if he says, let us follow after other gods whom you have not known, and let us serve and worship them. You shall not listen to the words of that prophet or that dreamer of dreams. For the Lord your God is testing you to know whether you love the Lord your God with all your heart and mind and all your soul, with your entire being. Let's look into this a little bit. Because what, what, what Moses is telling his countrymen is don't put anything above your loyalty, your allegiance, your obedience to God. Even if a man arises among you and can tell you every single thing that you want to hear and promise you every single thing that you want. The moment against what is true to God and God's will for you. Run from him, in fact, stone him. Let's look at it again. If he speaks to you and what he tells you comes to pass, then he goes on to say, follow me or live any and any way contrary to God's word. Turn away from him. That is God's proving us, proving us to see where our loyalties really lie. And, and if God speaks to us in a way that tells us something that we're not happy with. And we go to find somebody who will tell us what we want to hear. It is a test of where our loyalties really lie. Jeremiah found himself in a lot of trouble because he would only speak what God told him to. People box him, then put him in the toilet pit because he remained true in what he declared. He wasn't telling people what they wanted to hear. The accurate fulfillment of what God says, conformity to what God says is critical in our deciding whether or not to obey, to conform, to have regard for our prophet or our prophecy. Second thing. To prove prophecy by how it conforms, how it line up to the word of God. First Corinthians thirteen, verse nine and verse ten.
First Corinthians thirteen, nine and ten.
Yes.
For we do, for we know in part and we prophesy in part, for our knowledge is fragmentary and incomplete. But when that which is incomplete, sorry, but when that which is complete and perfect comes, that which is incomplete and partial will pass away.
Okay. Jesus tells us that before one little tithe of His word passes away, heaven and earth will pass away. The standard for truth, the standard for reliability, the standard for believability, the, the, the thing we can hang our hats on safely is God's word. Everything else is inadequate. Everything else is incomplete. So while, while we search for answers and while we search for direction in life, we already have in God's word a sure foundation for guidance. Two more things about safeguarding the, the integrity of prophecy. Don't know how, how best or how better to put that, but we're open to suggestions. Because we know of our limitations as human beings, that, that our knowledge is like, like the amplified Bible says, fragmentary and incomplete. Leaders and prophets for the good name of our Lord Jesus Christ and for the credibility of our witness and our obedience to God's word. We, we, we have to be careful and we have to be humble enough to be willing to submit, to subject for good order and for, like we said before, the integrity of the prophetic. We have to be willing to submit to one another. Any prophetic utterance, we feel compelled to deliver. Couple of weeks ago, in, in, in spending time with Reverend Hammond and the study, he, he gave us a background as to what the Corinthian church was like. It was a church full of spiritual gifts. Hmm. But it was a chaotic church. And it was a church in which while the gifts were functioning, the, the, the character of, of living, the quality of life in their field in many respects on moral grounds. Here, here Paul says, particularly in the exercise of the prophetic gifting. Strive to subject in humility, subject what is going to be delivered as prophetic to the scrutiny of others. First of all, he says, let two or three prophets speak as inspired by the Holy Spirit. While the rest pay attention and weigh carefully what he said. What are you weighing it against? You're weighing it against the consistency or it line up or it conform to the word of God. So the prophetic can't be delivered in disorder. He goes on to spell that out. Verse thirty says, if an inspired revelation is made to another who is seated, then the first person must keep quiet. Verse thirty-one, in this way, all can prophesy, one by one, so that everyone may be instructed and everyone may be encouraged. Back up a little bit. We, we, first come, first served, eh? Don't interrupt me. I don't have it on, no, no, no definitive authority here. But I have a, a suspicion that because Jesus is Lord of the church, because God is a God of order. Yielding to somebody who starts after us. He will line up the message so that one, two, or three will all confirm what he once said in that time, in that place, to the congregation. He says, in this way, verse thirty-one, you can all prophesy one by one because the real object of the prophetic is that everyone may be instructed and everyone may be encouraged. That is less likely to happen in an environment of confusion. Fourth thing about the proof of prophecy. Let's go to First Thessalonians chapter five, from verse nineteen to twenty-one. First Thessalonians five, nineteen to twenty-one.
Um, it's not this. This is not the prophecy, prove all things, all facts.
Go ahead, go ahead. Hello?
No.
Yes. Can you start over? You, you, you broke one little.
Uh, quench, quench, okay, quench not the spirit. This is not prophesy, prophesying and the proof all things, all facts, that which is good.
Okay, thank you very much. That's Alicia.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening. Thanks. First thing, three, three things here about safeguarding, preserving the, the integrity and the value of the prophet, of the prophetic. One, do not quench the Holy Spirit. Don't fight against it. Don't be unresponsive to it. Don't reject the guidance of the Holy Spirit. Don't resist him. Don't rebel against him. That, that, that's how in, in human terms, we come close to quenching the Holy Spirit. When the prophetic start with, with, with literally, sometimes, or, or, or virtually, tune out. Because you don't believe nothing there. Don't quench the spirit. Verse twenty. But we can attempt to quench poor water, poor scorn. Do not reject the gifts of prophecy or prophecies. Don't reject them. We don't know whatever reason people reject prophecies. Somebody are telling me business, somebody are telling me business. I'm a neighbor. All them know that. Don't pour scorn. Don't reject the prophetic. And then to go back to what we, we read in First Corinthians chapter fourteen, verse thirty. Verse twenty-nine and verse thirty. There's an important but in First Thessalonians five, verse twenty-one, he said, but test all things carefully. How do we test them? Carefully, without the bias, without the desire to quench and don't play, without our being inclined to reject. Test them carefully so that you can recognize what is good. And what is good is conforming in keeping with what God's word teaches. And it is true to what our experience, what our encounter, what our situation is. All right. So now we're open for comments and questions and hopefully some answers. Any questions? Any comments? Hello? Hello? All right, any questions, comments?
Sir, I think last part in regards to not dismissing.
Yes.
Um. Prophecy, um, is very interesting. Um, because sometimes, you know, you, you, you've, if you've spoken, you've heard stories where people talking. Who, where people share that, you know, they would have somebody come to them and giving certain prophecy and, uh, what have you, and they, they say in their mind, you know, they know, no, this is foolish, this is foolish, because of what the person is saying. But scripture says, don't, but here the scripture is saying, don't deny it all right away, you know, analyze it. Take what is good, um, put away what is bad, you know, how, how. I think the question is, how do we like consistently try to do that, you know, especially in this time where, you know, you're hearing prophecies left, right and sin, you know? How do we try not to be overwhelmed with all what is saying and, um, do our best to try and really enjoy the filter?
Mm-hmm. Well. If we, if we listen to every single bit of advice we, we get, we are going to end up in trouble. I don't know many, Brian, you ever heard the story of a man who had a load and a donkey heading to market? And everybody who he passed had some idea as to our best. He should carry the load.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard about it.
Yeah, until, until him end up carrying the donkey and the load. Because people thought he was burdening the donkey too much. So he took the donkey to market. And with a stretch of creative license, but the point is God is going to speak to you, he's going to speak to, to me. He's going to convict us about where he wants to take us, what he wants us to do. He's going to correct or reprove when we are found wrong and we are doing the, the unrepentant thing. He has given us his spirit to bear witness with our spirit. So we know deep down in our heart whether this is confirmation or something that I have been doubting. Or this is completely alien to me and, and something that God has not spoken to me about yet. And then we also have the, the, the black and white of his word. So if you come to me and tell me something that is not in keeping with God's word, I have good basis. But what I'm calling, I have a basis that cannot be contested to reject what I get. That is not in keeping with his word. If you go back to what Moses told the people of Israel. If him, if, no matter how good it sound, and no matter how marvelous what he does or says appears, if him leading us away from our God, then we reject him or her. Whoever the case may be. So yeah, we are entitled to weigh. We are entitled to test. And, and, and don't, don't ignore the fact that many false prophets have gone out into the world. Many ego trippers have gone out into the world. Many seeking their own glory and following and fame have gone out into the world. I, I, I encourage us every time we read Matthew twenty-four and Luke twenty-one, where Jesus is preparing his disciples and us for the last days. Note how many times he says, let no man deceive you. Note how many times he will say, I'm telling you this so that. God wants us to love him and to obey him with body, soul and spirit. All right. Any other question, observation, comment?
One more, um, but I hope it's not jumping the button a bit.
All right.
Um. I believe anybody, the Lord can give anybody a word. Um, need, any, anyone as anybody, anybody who's Christian and as well as, well, yes, who is, you know, worshiping, serving him and he's just listening for what he's saying to them. Um, but how, how do you know if, you know, what, do you know the difference between you will just, you're there just getting a word or if you have the gift of prophecy?
God, God uses anybody yielded to him. Now where he can't find somebody yielded to him, he can use a donkey. The point is, when God tells you something, he will tell you if him wanted to go to anybody else. Or he may tell you if him wanted to go to a congregation. I, I believe that he is that kind of all-knowing, but still intimate God. Personal, he will speak to us about what he wants us to do. And if anybody has that kind of reservation about which audience this particular word is for, you, you go to, you go to your elder. You go to a pastor. And, 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 and tell them what your concern is. I see a hand up, yeah, Horace, go ahead.
I'm not sure, but I think Brian was really asking, how do you know whether it is that you have a Doma gift or a Charisma, Charismata word? I think that's what he was asking.
Yes.
Am I right, Brian?
For, for, for the benefit of?
Yeah, yes, pretty much all along that lines, yes.
No, no, I'm going to ask Brother Horace for the help. For those of us who don't know what Doma is and what Charismata is. Speak to us in English if you don't, man.
Hmm. Um. First Corinthians, chapter twelve, speak about the gifts of the spirit and the gift of prophecy shows up among that package of the early gifts called the Charismata gifts.
Mm-hmm.
From twenty-eight, verses twenty-eight down, you see gifts again coming up and those are Doma gifts. They also repeat themselves in the, in Ephesians, we call them offices. So you have the Charismata gift where you can get a prophetic word, but you don't have the office of a prophet.
Mm-hmm.
So I think where I wanted to know, how do you know whether you have the office of a prophet? As opposed to, you know, receiving, operating in the current matter gifts. Um, Brian, my understanding is that the office of a prophet is a weighty designation. It's weightier and when we see the calling of a prophet in the Bible days, um, yeah, it's, it, it tends to be accompanied by signs of significance. Also, the prophetic authority of a prophet, one who holds the office of a prophet, is somewhat weightier again than one that operates in a Charismata gift. In other words, a prophet could actually by the spoken word strike someone dead and seems like those. If I'm wrong, Pastor, correct me.
The, 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 what, the one thing, the one thing I'd say that i- is, is this. When we my, 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 my starting place is that the, the, the power lies with the Lord of the church. It is he who gives the gifts to men, separately as he wills. And that there are different ways in which a gift may work. Again, in keeping with, 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 with what Paul writes to the Ephesian church and to the Corinthian church. So that how a, a prophet who is called prophet in Ephesians, chapter four, works over in the country, might be different from how a prophet is working or works. Because you, 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 you don't work outside of what the spirit of God, the Lord of the church permits you. Hmm? So that today, he might use somebody acting with, on, under the influence of the Holy Spirit. Because there is nobody present who is in the office of a prophet. A, a, and I, I don't, I don't say, I don't see God restraining himself and, and his, his, his glory in a congregation or, or in, in a situation, simply because he don't have present physically that moment, that time. Somebody who is and in the office of prophet or he don't have somebody who is, who last week acted with the enablement, the inspiration of the Holy Spirit charismatically. The, the, for, for me, a safer place is sensitivity to the Holy Spirit and obedience to what he prompts us to do. That is not downplaying the difference between an office holder, recognized consistently carrying the, the, the gifting or somebody who is just acting out what the Holy Spirit will impress upon them in a particular place and a particular setting. But today, 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 one of us might prophesy, but nobody know recognize we as a prophet. Tomorrow, somebody who is recognized as a prophet passes through and, and executes what the spirit of the Lord prompts him to do. Any other question or comment, observation? Just a little.
Yes, good night.
Go ahead.
I would not just say that. Pretend to what Brother Wright says and pretend to better Brian and you said something earlier. What I want to say is that when you are called to be a prophet, everything don't show it on you one time. As you heal and grow in grace, the more, he said, everything is done by proportion of faith.
Yes.
So everything takes time. As you grow in grace, yielding yourself to the Lord, he establish you more. It's like we have our children. When they're small, we tend to give them a proper to eat out of. But as they grow and grow, we tend to charge to give them something breakable to eat out of. How we, we said, quite likely can handle it. And as they grow more and more, it's like giving them a china and those things to eat out of. How we think they are grown enough to handle it. So it is also with gifts, not just a prophetic gifts, but with gifts. Or even ministry, God called you pastor to be a pastor. When you started out, you weren't this seasoned. But as you grow in grace and heed your step to God, he establishes you by speaking to you more and more and more as you heal to him. So also is the prophetic ministry. When God called you to it, he knows true everything for you. Can't show a purse to swine. You have to grow. And as you grow and he trusted you and he trusted you, he entrusted you with more and more and more. And as you speak, don't listen for people to tell you how to speak. But what God is saying, as you said earlier, to your spirit, what God is saying to you to say. Because every word of him ought to be judged by those who are hearing it, especially those who are spiritual. They will judge your words. For me, I can speak. When I started my journey with the Lord and he called me into this ministry in Ezekiel one, two, three and thirty-three. When he called me, I thought it was a somebody else and I was telling somebody else, say, this is what the Lord is saying for them. When I start prophesy at first, I didn't have one idea of how this thing work. People saying, people telling me them business, I may talk it out. Didn't understand that part either, because nobody never tell me, only know say, somebody said to me to speak. Didn't understand. But as I grow in the Lord and get older and more and more, I learn to know the voice of the Lord. And when you know the voice of the Lord and he speaks to your spirit and he said, do this. He tell you exactly how to go about doing this. There's time when he doesn't give it, whatever, whole entire nine yards. But he'll give you a scripture. Sit down and come give us scripture and keep on joking you with that scripture. Sit down and come give us scripture and keep on joking you with that scripture. So as you said earlier, we are to try the spirit and as Brother Wright said, some is those big words that he used, we don't understand them. So thank you for asking to explain to us who is, you know, unlearned that we can understand what he's saying. But as you go, to me, the most important in pastor, as you grow in grace and as you heal yourself to God, the rest is history. Just love.
Thank you, thank you. Horace? Horace?
Yeah, sorry. I sometimes have a problem navigating this screen. Um, I heard what Sister Gordon said, but I want to, permit if I will, if you will, allow me to draw your attention to two, two situations in the scripture where people didn't even have any knowledge of the Lord and the gift of prophecy had zero. One was Samuel. He never heard the voice of the Lord before. He didn't know what it was. And when the Lord called him to the office of a prophet, he was given significant prophetic burdens to carry from the get-go. There's yet another man to be found in Amos, chapter seven, the prophet Amos. If it was clear that he was all dear bushes of a sheep tender. He said he wasn't a prophet, he nor was he a son of a prophet, but the Lord just took him out and just offloaded on him the prophetic burden. So the office of a prophet tends to be a little different for, for where I stand. Correct me if I'm wrong, Pastor.
Mm hmm. I, I'm not going I, I'm not, I'm not going to lay, lay down a, a, a law here because if, if you, if you consider Moses and, and his call to the service as, as shepherd of a flock, him, him find every possible reason why him couldn't do it. Um. Him, him, him him just never want to go back to Egypt. He found excuses. The point is for, for all of us is that when, when, when God call you, you can run and you can hide. And you know. Not only do you know, there is no escape. So yeah, Amos wasn't a, a prophet nor the son of a prophet. There, there's another fellow who was gathering, um, sycamore fruit. Who, who, when he got the call, wouldn't believe that it was him. But the call was unmistakable. And, and we're, we're, we're talking interestingly about yieldedness to God. The most important thing is, is our, our obedience. God not, God not looking for, for experience in, in, in depositing in us long before we get recalled in, in building us up for what in calling us to. Sometimes we, we, we resist that call because we have our own ideas as to where we should be. So yeah, when Samuel getting called, he never even know the voice of God in his mind. But if you use the principle that Jesus gave us in, in, in St. John, chapter ten, him said, my sheep know my voice. My, my boy hear the call and him know he must respond. Him, him, him probably not respond precisely, but him can't stay in bed, him go look for Eli. And Eli would be able to point him because of his experience. He was able to point him to who the real call was coming from. And, and, and that's why this business of, of community and, and body fitly joined together is, is, is so important. No, but God not expecting any of us to, to wing it on our own. If we, if we wing it on our own because we're too, we're too big and, and, and bad and bold, we're, we're going to make mistakes, mistakes that we don't need to make. Alright. It's quarter to ten. We we're going to wrap up here. Uh. Mr. Simone? You still here? Simone? Simone? Alright. Let's close in prayer. Lord of the church, our Father, our friend, the one who gives to us good gifts, the gift of your Holy Spirit. Our comforter, the one who guides us into all truth. We thank you for the time that we have spent together. Thank you, Lord God, for your word, which is indeed light and lamp, sure, inspiring, illuminating. We ask, oh God, that what we have learned tonight might have effect in how we yield to you and how we follow your leading, your purposes for our lives. But Lord God, even as we mull over with the help of your Holy Spirit, what we've heard, you might use it, Lord God, to inspire our response to you and your purposes for all lives. Yeah. Do a thing, Lord God, beyond what we were expecting. Do a thing in, in each person here in, in, in deepening commitment or, or in initiating commitment to a call, to our work. We thank you. Bless every home represented here. Pray, Lord God, that of, of your people are represented in this forum. Your Holy Spirit would cover every household represented. That you may be drawn closer into being what you want for us to be. Here our prayer we ask you in Jesus' name. Amen.